Hello and welcome to the November 26 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting, like to call the meeting to order. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on November 19th, 2012 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. If I can have a roll call please, Mr. Mahmood.
Sure. Ms. Bogoshevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santa Fante?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kint?
Here.
If we can rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to acknowledge the correspondences as shown in the agenda. We had 15 letters on a number of different items, so I'd like to just thank those in the community for continuing communicating with us in that manner. And I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to begin by sharing some wonderful news with the board and the community about how well our students have been doing, in particular in athletics, but before I get there, it's my pleasure to congratulate Hillsborough High School senior Matt Blaufeld, who was chosen to represent the state of New Jersey in the Macy's All-American Marching Band at the Thanksgiving Day Parade last week in New York City. Matt joined 225 students who comprised the band. Students were chosen based upon their musical ability and past achievements. Matt plays trombone in the Raiders Marching Band and in the Wind Ensemble and participates in many other ensembles. Let's give our congratulations to Matt for great job. We're wrapping up our fall season, and it's my pleasure to share with you that our boys' soccer was ranked sixth in the state. The team shared the SCI A championship with Pingree and made it to the NJ SI A sectional semifinals. They also broke the school record for the most shutouts in a season. Congratulations to our boys' soccer team. Our girls' soccer team also made it to the NJ SI A sectional semifinals. During the tournament, they brought care packages to the athletes from a school in Brick Township who was suffering from the tremendous devastation during the hurricane, and that was greatly appreciated by that community. Way to go, girls' soccer team. Field hockey this season isn't over yet. The team won the first round in the NJ SI A tournament. Let's give them a hand. Girls' tennis is in a rebuilding year. Thought they did a great job. Also, thank you to the girls' tennis team. Our football team made it to the NJ SI A playoffs for the second year in a row, however lost to the first round. However, senior John Benesicki, I'm sorry, I pronounced it incorrectly, he broke the school record for touchdowns in rushing yards. Let's give John a big hand, and sorry for mispronouncing your last name. Our gymnastics team had three girls compete in the NJ SI A individual championship. The team is ranked eighth in the state. Congratulations to our gymnasts. Boys' cross country won the SCI A championship and are currently ranked eighth in the state as well. Congratulations to the boys' cross country. And the girls' cross country won the SCI A championship, the NJ SI A sectional and Group Four championship, and are ranked third in the state. Congratulations to the girls' cross country team. And finally, the competition cheer team will be defending their regional championship title in mid-December. Hopefully, they will qualify for the Nationals again. Congratulations to our girls' competitive cheering team. Now, what I also want to share with the board is an update on our professional development work. At our last board meeting, you may have recalled that we were talking about taking the canceled professional development days and moving them to the end of the school year after graduation and using them for training in the new teacher evaluation model. We've received a good amount of feedback from our teachers, as well as from administrators, and we'd like to modify that. We'd like to use the Martin Luther King Day as a professional development day that will focus on curriculum and allow teachers to take at least six hours of tech training that would qualify for one of the other staff development days in June. We would still keep one day after graduation as a primer for the new strong model, our new teacher evaluation model, but this was, we floated this idea out to the schools, as well as to various teacher groups and the leadership team, all of whom are in support of this, and we hope that you are as well. Any thoughts or comments from the board?
Was that a day that was in play if we had future weather problems?
We still have President's Day. To answer your question directly, yes, it would have been a day, however, we would have to have bad weather before the end of June, which certainly is a possibility.
Tomorrow.
I'm sorry, before the end of July, before the end of January. But, yeah, that could be used. However, the need to help our teachers work with many of the new curriculum areas, I think, outweighed the potential of using that as a day. We still have President's Day, as well as days during the spring break.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure what the priority order was of the days in the spring, if we had to go to extra days.
Right. The education committee met, and we also talked about some various options of bringing days back in if we needed to take additional snow days. We also shared this idea with the education committee as well, and they have been supportive. I think Greg may have a question?
As long as Chris mentioned the snow day situation, could I just, I'll speak by now since I was going to previously. When we made the calendar for the current year that we're in now, we already know what we're going to do. Am I, let me phrase it this way. Am I incorrect in thinking that we already know what we're going to do now that we've consumed all of our snow days? The next days would be from the spring break. I don't know why are we looking into other days at all concerning ourselves? And also, I had this question after I read the minutes. I was not at the previous meeting, and this question came up, or this statement was made in the minute somewhere that said, "Well, we need to decide now what we're going to do," but I thought we already made that decision when we made the calendar. So, someone correct me.
Right. What is listed in the calendar is that first day, and that future days would be taken at the discretion, at the board's discretion.
So, only one day is accounted for?
Only one day.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff.
Ms. Wasson?
I was just going to say that I think the Martin Luther King Day is a very wise choice, given what we heard from the teachers at the last meeting, that they felt ill-prepared with regard to the curriculum. And so, I think getting it in sooner rather than later is good for the teachers and the students, so I appreciate you considering that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item of business is the approval of minutes. A little bit of feedback. We'll start with the November 12th executive session, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the November 12th executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Motion passes.
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the November 12th regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Mr. Gillette? You abstaining?
Yep.
Okay.
Abstaining, I'm sorry. For the record, I'll say it. Abstaining. Hit me.
So you got the three?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the minutes are approved. Now, we would like to solicit public input on the 2013 school budget, so 2013-2014 school budget. For those coming up, please give your name and address.
My name is Toby Cansegor. I live on Deer Haven Drive in Hillsborough. I am here to suggest an addition to the 2013-2014 school budget. The 2009-2010 school year was the last time, to my knowledge, that sensitivity training was part of new teacher training and optional for new administrators. I am familiar with the worlds of difference training because I attended the training for trainers with a number of my Hillsborough School District colleagues. I believe that this kind of training needs to be reinstituted for all of those associated with the Hillsborough School District, including the students, for several reasons. After reviewing our current curricula, I realize that we have followed the New Jersey Curriculum Core Content Standards very closely, and kudos to all of those people who spent so much time writing the curriculum. However, the state does allow for about 20% of your curriculum to be outside of those core content standards. For example, the state of New Jersey enacted the Amistad Act, and I quote, "to integrate the history and contributions of African Americans and the descendants of the African diaspora." In our curricula, in elementary school, we discuss Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks and Ruby Bridges, and even the Atlantic slave trade. We are also supposed to talk about cultural diversity and holidays. In Grade 10, we mention the Amistad Trial and do an extensive study of the Civil War. In Grade 11, we discuss the Civil Rights Movement. We list three films, Eyes of the Prize, Ghost of Mississippi, and Mississippi Burning. That's all. There is nothing there that seems to be up to date, talking about relationships now. And I also checked our literacy curriculum, and I didn't seem to see anything there that would give students that kind of diversity and sensitivity. There's another area. The Holocaust Mandate states, "Every Board of Education shall include instruction on the Holocaust and genocide in an appropriate place in the curriculum of all elementary and secondary pupils." Our Grade 11 curriculum mentions the Holocaust on page 14 of that curriculum and lists the film Escape from Sobibor. That is all. Our literacy curriculum does not appear to offer much more. I know that we do offer an elective on genocide and Holocaust at the high school, but it's an elective. Not all students can possibly enroll for that. These two areas are merely examples of where I fear we have to improve our sensitivity and understanding of diversity in our curriculum. We need only to look at our student body to see great diversity in religion, ethnicity, and culture. Our job is to help these students work through their differences and to work together. We talk about educating for the 21st century. A hallmark of the 21st century has already proven itself to be diversity. We need only look at our recent presidential election to see that this is true. We also laud the teaching of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, as the most important area of study for the future. What good is an excellent engineer who has no sense of what is good for humanity? I would hope that our talented next generation would look to curing diseases and improving the lives of those with inadequate food and water, as opposed to creating the next bloody video game. For all of these reasons, I suggest that the Board of Education consider funding sensitivity and diversity training. And I would respectfully suggest that the administration and the Board of Education members be included. We need only look at the 2013-2014 calendar to see institutional insensitivity, but I will speak to that issue later. I would be more than happy to meet with anyone who would like to discuss this further. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Cansegor. Any other public input on the 2013-14 school budget? Moving on to new business, if we, I'd like to open up the floor and solicit public input Okay, seeing none. Like to solicit comments from the public regarding our, the upcoming action agenda. Comments from the board will occur during the action agenda itself.
Hi, Amy Salinger. I live in Bridgewater, but I teach here at Otten Road. I just have a question about the revised math curriculum that's being approved tonight for Grade 6 and 7. I'm just, is that something that's revised that we're adding to this year, or is that the one from last year? Yes, it's the one from last year. Okay. I just wasn't sure, because I had worked on it, and I just...
We're just making it official.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Taking away Mr. Pulsofer for the Human Resources Committee.
The committee met on November 15th. We began with a discussion about the search for a replacement for Mr. Rocco, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. We discussed the continuing role within the district. We also discussed the timeline. Dr. Schiff raised some concerns about the fact that our posting in the Star Ledger unfortunately coincided with Sandy and the following snowstorm, and the concern that there are potentially a field of candidates out there who would not have had an opportunity to see that posting and, you know, and submit and participate in the search. So we've extended the deadline. I believe we have an additional posting, Dr. Schiff?
We extended the deadline. We have over 30 applicants. We're moving forward.
So, we're continuing on that search and hope to have a replacement in time, but Dr. Schiff is also working on potential interims to hold the position while the search is continuing on. We then followed up with a discussion of the goals for the Human Resources Committee and the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. The first goal is the teacher evaluation-related goals of a new program. The next step in the goal is to develop a training schedule for administrators and teaching staff. This will require two days of training for administrators and one and a half to two days for teachers. There is, because we have to have an acronym, DACT, the District Evaluation Advisory Committee. It's required by the state, and it's made up of 51 teachers, supervisors, and administrators in the district, and they will continue to meet, they will meet one more time with Mr. Rocco before he leaves, and they will continue after his departure. The second goal was regards to the media centers. Mr. Rocco will have a final recommendation before he departs on that also. And the third goal is related to training for non-certificated staff and administration, and we're continuing on the needs assessment and a survey from that to put together that program, and Mr. Rocco will again have a final recommendation before his departure. The committee continued to follow up on the goals for our superintendent. We received feedback from the other committees regarding the goals that had been originally presented, and after discussion, the committee agreed that, as an action item, Dr. Schiff would revise the goals that we had discussed to include a qualitative goal concerning professional development, change the goal for student performance. We had set the criteria at 19 groups, subgroups, beating DFG average, and that was up to 21, and that we would reorder the goals to reflect the priority and alignment with the district goals. The committee then had a brief discussion about the upcoming HEA negotiations, and the final item we discussed is the industrial technology position at the high school, sorry, at the middle school. We are not getting a good enough supply of candidates for that position. It's sort of a field that's going away in terms of, you know, people working in that area. So we discussed an option that is on the agenda tonight, I believe, to have an instructional assistant in the industrial technology position so that we have another teacher in the room. This teacher is not qualified for all of the equipment, but would be able to supervise some activities so that the teacher in place would be able to supervise activities on the equipment, so that students in that class would be able to get the time they need on the equipment for that class. And that was the end of our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsofer. Education Committee, Mrs. Haas.
The education committee had a very good meeting on November 15th. We started out, Mrs. Cansegor, with a wonderful proposal from the middle school principal on a new STEM program that would start in the middle school, and we had a very thorough and professional presentation, and we were, we were given all of the results of the research that was done and the planning and preparation that was done to create a program in the middle school that would actually present authentic problems and the application of engineering skills, and to address the diversity of student culture, learning styles and ability levels, not simply enrichment, and to integrate content and skills and dispel myths about engineering, to engage students in a way that hadn't been done before, to offer high-quality curriculum resources, and to partner with corporate university and community resources. They had researched several programs that had already been created by various colleges and universities in the local area and had researched those thoroughly. They had visited some other schools that had such a program as well, and the major sticking point was where to put it in the schedule. So, this is a lifelong issue in Hillsborough Township, I guess, so we are talking about various areas of STEM, including extracurricular activities as well, and teacher professional development and staffing, and the various supply and equipment issues that would be, and facility issues that would be required to carry this on. So, we've gotten pretty far in terms of this discussion, but we still need to resolve certain other issues, and we'll be discussing it again at the next education committee meeting or two, and hopefully can come out early next year with some sort of announcement to the community. But as I said, it's a very preliminary stage. This was the first time the education committee had seen this proposal, and I think everybody sort of needed a little time to digest this and do a few tweaks. So, that was the major portion of our meeting. We also discussed our strategic plan goals for next year in terms of common assessments and development and facilitating of articulation in our new curricula, and preparation of students for college readiness in mathematics, although I, of course, would like to see every subject. We discussed also the merit goals for the superintendent, which Chris referenced, and we approved multiple curricula, five in math, health and physical education, technology, applied technology, and four in information and communication technology. These were curricula that needed updating because they were either due or in need of revision, and those were all approved by our committee unanimously. And then we spent our usual time discussing district calendars, which I really don't want to do anymore, but here we are. And just to the comments that were made before, this year we had sort of a unique situation wherein the days that were lost were professional development days. Usually, you know, we were able to make up the student days by utilizing the days that otherwise would have been the NJEA convention, but the professional development days remained, needed to be made up, so it's a little bit unique this year. I understand that suggestions were made about Martin Luther King Day as an in-service day. I personally am not happy about that, but there were considerations that were needed in terms of the fact that the stuff that was supposed to be done in November was supposed to be done early in the year because it related to the curriculum. I'm not certain that that's a reason to do it on that date, but whatever. Another suggestion was that there was going to be the possibility of making up some of the time technologically, and the third in-service day would be made up at the end of the year. Next year, in, oh, the first makeup day for students would be March 25th, which is the first day of the spring break, and a discussion was held about what the second and third days should be, and there was some consensus about the possibility of March 27th and 28th. So, basically, if we have a bad winter, we're going to have a problem having anything resembling a spring break, and basically what we're going to have is the first day of Passover and Good Friday during that week. But once again, we're going to discuss it at a future meeting, along with the 2014-15 calendar and the 15-16 calendar. Additionally, Mr. Kint asked that a review of the one-to-one pilots be on a future agenda. Hopefully, we'll get to that next month. And I liked very much what Mrs. Cansegor brought up, and I would like to recommend that for our next education committee meeting as well. I think this is an area we really need to focus on, so thank you for bringing that up. That's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Mr. Gillette with operations?
Thank you, Mr. Kint. Operations Committee met October 21st. We had a number of items which I'll go through briefly. I know Mr. Rocco wants to get out of here. First, we had Scott Maholic from the SSP Architects come and speak with us about the billing, as you recall, a couple months ago. Already, we had some issues with some of the billing from SSP. There are continuing discussions with administration about changing the billing procedures. Some ideas were tossed around, such as maybe taking the first $1,000 each month in hourly charges and sort of writing that, having them write that off or apply that to what they would later get in a percentage from the ensuing project, that hourly charges were going to, ideas like that. And so they're going to move forward with that, and we're going to be waiting for a report from administration on what they came up with. Operations Committee was satisfied with the progress that administration is making in regarding the SSP billing at this point. We talked about the strategic plan goals for the, this current year for operations area. There are two strategic goals. One is the establishment of a green committee, and Mr. Mahmood is working on that. The committee will consist of members from the public, the administration and staff, and this is sort of, and what, and students too. It's sort of a steering committee to give ideas in various areas, but they do not yet have their goals or charter, I guess, established, so we're going to hear about that in the future. The second goal, and strategic plan goal for operations this year, is the establishment of an adult school for area residents. There's a modest goal for getting that established and getting some classes running, and Mr. Mahmood, I think, is working on that also. Right, Mr. Mahmood? There you go. Keep knocking. There you go. We also reviewed the superintendent's merit goals for this current year. We had some of the same recommendations as Mr. Pulsofer mentioned, so I think we're pretty much in line with that, and we're going to have that, I guess, on an agenda at a future board meeting. I think all of the committees are pretty much aligned on superintendent merit goals. Also, I wanted to report on, let me see. We had a couple of other things. One was, we talked about the budget calendar. We've talked about that before, when the budget has to be done, when the, when it has to be submitted to the county and all that stuff. I'll update when we get closer to that time. Nothing to worry about now. We did have some discussion of what to do about current capital projects that have gone over budget and where to take that money from, and see if I remember exactly where. There was very, a couple of similar options, and basically what we're going to do is we're going to take some funds from what we call excess surplus, which seems redundant. It's the surplus in excess of the surplus that you need by state law to have. So the surplus above and beyond that, we're going to be able to use some of that to take care of the... care of the two major projects that were a little bit over budget and sort of unexpected. One is the, what we've discussed before, lintels at the middle school exterior door entrances, which we already knew about. And the other one is the HVAC in the server room at the high school. We're having continuing problems with that, and the actual, it's actually going to be, we got eight bids, but that's the good news. We got a lot of bids for it, but it's $127,000. So it was about twice as much as we thought it might be. There's some other electrical work that needs to be done that was unanticipated, so that's that. Just one other thing I wanted to share with you, not as operations matter necessarily, but in my role as liaison to Township Committee, I met with myself and Dr. Schiff and Mr. Mahmood met with Township Committeeman Doug Thompson, who's the liaison to the school board from Township Committee, Administrator Anthony Ferreira and Police Chief Paul Kaminsky, to discuss some concerns that we received from parents around the time of the June general election primary. As you know, on the general election primary, most of our school buildings are used for voting, the same as in the November general election. There were some concerns from parents had about general access by the public to our buildings during those days. As you recall, we received a couple of emails about that. And also, we've had, and the township shared that they've also, from time to time, received some of the same concerns, not only about that, but also about access to Hillsborough Elementary School for voting at all of the elections. That would be the general election, the primary and the school board election. There's problems going in, going out, especially when school is in session. So we met on that. We had some good ideas, very cooperative. And actually, I'm going to probably ask Dr. Schiff to comment on this because after we had this meeting, this was about a month ago, we had this meeting. We let it sort of simmer for a while, and then we had a unique experiment due to Hurricane Sandy. We had an experiment about what we could do. Sort of experiment was through neural apps, and we had some results from what we did during Hurricane Sandy. And maybe, as I'm finished now, maybe, Dr. Schiff, if you don't mind, Mr. Kinst.
Sure. What happened during the election is that there were polling places that didn't have power, and we offered the high school as an alternative polling location. I believe we have five out of our six elementary schools that are used as polling places. Four out of the five were relocated to the high school, the only exception being HES. The feedback that we got anecdotally from voters who were there was positive. The amount of, the ease of parking, the ease of entrance into that part of the high school gym seemed to, seemed to work. And the question that we asked the municipality to consider is looking at a permanent solution of pulling the polling places out of the elementaries and put it into the high school, which would address some of the concerns that were raised by members of the public before. If, however, we're able to do that, we may consider the possibility of actually opening school on those days and making adjustments for those elections, allowing enough parking, et cetera. But that would be, that would be for further discussion. But at this time, there is conversation about that.
I think that, yeah, I think that about sums it. And the Board of Elections, County Board of Elections is, you've had some discussion with them, they're being cooperative and letting us sort of figure it out and come to them with a proposal. Is that?
Yeah, exactly. There's actually a process that the municipal clerk needs to go through in order to have the County Board of Elections certify any change in polling locations, and they're exploring that process at this time.
Right. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Any questions, discussions with regard to the committee reports? Mr. Pulsifer?
Mr. Gillette, with respect to the, you discussed the budget calendar. Do we know what the timeline is for? Part of the whole budget calendar also is the potential consideration for the shift to November. I know we had touched on that a while back about when do we have to make a decision in terms of if we were going to move it. Is that part of what your discussion covered, and can you give us an update on that?
Yes, and you know, and we had the exact date, and I don't know if I have it in my notes, but we have the exact date, which I, we can, Mr. Mahmood can email it to the board. It was February.
It's early February.
There was an exact date, and then we strapped laid back and said, okay, our last board meeting before that date would have to be the date we would have to vote to move to November.
Have a discussion, yeah.
Drop, the drop down. I don't want to say that. It sounds bad. You know, the final date. But it was February something, and I don't see it in my, in the calendar, or maybe I don't have it. But you'll email it to us?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is that specific subject being discussed by the Operations Committee as to what the sentiment is?
Yeah, we didn't discuss it at this meeting. We sort of rolled it forward, but Dr. Schiff is going to make a presentation to the board, maybe the next meeting. I'm not sure.
Probably after the new year.
Oh, after the new year now? Okay. Of what his recommendation is. Operations Committee was sort of split at this point, but we already heard Dr. Schiff's recommendation to us. But I want to keep you suspense, unless you really want to.
You just want me to?
I'll leave that for him to say. I'll leave that for Dr. Schiff to say, but he's going to do a whole thing, you know, it's probably going to be PowerPoint and everything.
You just want to make sure I show up for that January meeting. That's all you're doing.
No, it'll be important as, for the Operations Committee, as they go through that, is to get information from the election. So what was the turnout? What was the, you know, in terms of percentage of people who actually voted? How many people showed up? Those types of things are going to be important. Also, if we can get comparables from, you know, feedback from board members, administrators from Somerville, other districts in our group, so that we can have as, as, as robust a discussion as possible.
We wanted to know if, when people voted in November, did they go down and just vote for President Obama and didn't skip to board members? That would be a terrible result. I don't think we know all that, that information yet. You know, if the people knew they could vote for three, because you have all these people voting, you might not know, so we're going to see if we can get some of that so we have a more informed decision.
Compared to our last election turnout, though, it would be hard to come up with less.
I may be surprised. I was just looking, I was looking at some of the results, and it's a fraction of the number of people who voted for, it's at least, at least half, less than half of the people who voted in a township election voted and the board, school board, when they're on the same ballot. So I don't know all the specific details. I was just looking at some of the nearby one.
Still be higher than the turnout we actually had in the school board election.
We'll see. We'll see. Okay.
Probably.
Any other?
This year, maybe, but not every year. Presidential elections are the highest by a lot.
And our past school board election was one of the lowest by a lot, certainly in the 10 or 12 years I've been actively involved in all this.
But we've had general elections with 22% turnout, and we've had school board elections with 16% turnout in April. So it's.
But that's the worst of the presidential and the best of the school board. Particularly, if I remember the numbers correctly, our last school board election was around 7%, which to me is.
Like I said, we want to have those data in terms of what turnouts were before and after the change and that, so. Okay, any other, any other questions or discussion with regard to the committee reports? Mrs. Haas?
Yeah, I'd like to ask about the proposal in relation to the industrial technology teacher. I'm concerned that even with two people in the classroom, it could be a safety issue. Is there a problem with having additional children in one of those classrooms, even with a second teacher?
I'll let Mr. Rocco answer, but I think the simple answer is there are things, there is work that they have to do where safety is of minimal concern, and so the instructional assistant or whatever the official position is would be supervising that aspect. But this would allow the certificated teacher in the classroom to actually spend time on the equipment, which right now isn't happening because there isn't somebody there.
I understand that.
But, Mr. Rocco, could you?
Yeah.
Slightly concerned that safety is an issue just by virtue of having more than the usual number of children in the classroom.
Absolutely, because this position was designed to lower class numbers, so we'd have more sections. Therefore, we could have a teacher that would be able to monitor the use of the equipment, the saws and those type of thing, those types of things. However, there are no, there are no people that are certified, so Dr. Trubulski and I have spent a lot of time talking about options. One of his primary concerns has been safety in the classroom. As Mr. Pulsifer has said, what we can do is the teacher, certified teacher, can focus on the students using the drills and the saws and the routers and some of the other stuff that has power associated with it. And then the eighth graders, you know, their project that has been for years are those tables, yes, so.
Got to have our tables.
Yes, there are, there's staining and painting and tiling associated with it that the aide can then assist with, which again, you have to be careful using the equipment, and the instruction will be done by the certified teacher, but she will be able to manage. She's also been a sub in that program since day one, so she's received training and she knows what's expected in those classrooms.
Well, that's great. I just hope you continue to advertise for the position.
We will, unfortunately. It's a, it's a dying position in the sense of people coming out with certifications or people that are actually interested in the position. The pool is very shallow, single digits, and we've been posting for a long time and have sent out to our professional organizations, and we have not gotten applicants that are either certified or capable of doing the job. And we're still going, though. We're still attempting.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a request for moving forward when we do the committee reports. I know that there's, there were some alternates that were in, so if we can, when you start the committee reports, just state who was present at the meetings. That would be, we can do that moving forward. I think it'd just be helpful if we have different, different people participating in the committees.
Would you like that information now?
Let's go for it. Sure.
All right. Dr. Swasan was in attendance as an alternate at our HR committee meeting, and unfortunately, we only had two present because of a late change in people's schedules, so that was our attendance.
Okay.
Who was that?
What?
Oh, just the attendees.
We had all of our people. Well, Tween was absent, but we had one person.
Okay.
Oh, everybody was there. Jen came a little bit late. So was Judy, Tom, myself and Jen was.
Okay. All right, thanks. Mrs. Haas?
I would just like to say that when we have attendance, when at least a majority of the regular members of a particular committee can't attend, I would suggest that the date be changed. You know, at some point, you have a majority that's not been following through with the work of the committee, and while it's, you know, very valuable to have a mix at times and get different opinions, there is a certain amount of continuity that goes from one meeting to the other that has to be made up. So I would hope that we could at least get two people or change the, change the meeting date.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the heading of education to approve the travel and related expenses, to approve the HIV investigation list, approve the curriculum and revise curriculum as listed, approve the IDEA carryover funds for fiscal year 12 to fiscal year 13, and amend fiscal year 13 to include the following funds, to approve the non-public technology initiative program purchases, and approve the settlement agreement as attached. And that's what I have under education.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through 7 of the action agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion regarding items A1 through 7? Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Ms. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Swasan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I recommend under the area of human resources. The resolution to create a .5 instructional aide position, that would be IDA grant funded, a .5 registered nurse, and the nursing job description. Approve resignation. Approve the revised distribution of IDA grant funds. Approve the in-service day payment as listed. Revise, approve the revision to the mentor. Approve the contract changes as listed, leaves of absence, and appointments of long-term subs, instructional assistant coach, assistant for after-school clubs funded through IDEA, mentors, substitutes and other substitute teachers. Approve administrator salaries for the 2012-2013 school year for the assistant superintendent for curriculum, the assistant superintendent for human resources, and the business administrator board secretary, as per the attachment. And we also have two items to add. The board has in front of them an addendum to the human resources section, including a motion to revise a leave of absence and a motion to revise the long-term substitute to cover for that leave of absence.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through 12.
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, I move that the board approve the items B1 through B12 as listed in the action agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments? Mr. Pulsifer?
First of all, could we separate B4?
Yep.
And just as a form of matter of information pertaining our discussion about the industrial technology assistant, that is the instructional assistant in item B8.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Any other discussion? Okay, so this will be for items B1 through 3 and 5 through 12. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Swasan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B4 of the agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Pulsifer?
Abstain.
Okay. Ms. Swasan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, to accept the monthly financial reports, bills, to approve line item transfers, and to accept the following donations of social studies material, as well as a five-disc CD changer receiver model and iPad for Triangle School.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C1 through C4 of the action agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, just want to thank the, thank the two donors for their donations. And roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Swasan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Okay, and I would like to open, solicit the public for comments on old business. If you can, as you go up, if you can give your name and address, please.
My name is still Toby Kansigor, and I still live at 10 Deer Haven Drive in Hillsborough. I believe that the 2013-2014 calendar, as passed by the Board of Education on October 22nd, 2012, should be revisited and revised. The first day of this calendar, September 6th, 2013, is a Friday. Pedagogically, I do not believe that this meets the needs of students. Our youngest students will most probably forget whatever instruction they're given, and by Monday morning, the teachers will only have to repeat their lessons again. Friday, September 6th, 2013, is the second day of the Jewish holiday of Rosh Hashanah. It is one of the holiest days in the Jewish calendar, and most of the first and second days are spent in synagogue. I was a participant in the negotiations almost 30 years ago, which culminated in the inclusion of the first day of Rosh Hashanah on the Hillsborough calendar. Closing schools for the first day and not the second was a compromise. For example, Montgomery closes for the first day. East Brunswick closes for the first and second days. and insulting to the Jewish community. Parents and children will be forced to make a choice between their religion and the first day of school, made all the more difficult because education is a highly valued component of our culture. Some students will be entering the first day of a monumental change in their lives, entering kindergarten, going to grade five or grade seven or grade nine. They're going to a new school. What will they miss? My grandson will enter kindergarten in September, and I never thought that I would say that I am happy he does not live in Hillsborough. On September 6, he will be in synagogue with his parents and his grandparents, just as he has done since he was born. Teachers who will come to work will need to determine how to handle those students who are missing and then deal with them on the second day of school. It would be even more prejudicial to single those students out on Monday because of their religious beliefs. How will you deal with the teachers who will be absent for religious reasons? Currently, the district forces Jewish teachers to take one of their two personal days for the second day of Rosh Hashanah. And if memory serves me right, teachers must give five-day notice for a personal day? How will they do this before school officially opens? Who will verify the paperwork? How quickly will this be done? I know creating the calendar is a trying chore. When I was a Hillsborough School District teacher and curriculum supervisor, I was involved in some calendar discussions in the past. But I must return to my original premise. The choice of this day as the opening for the school year is insensitive and insulting to the Jewish students, parents, and faculty, as well as a poor pedagogical choice. Think of the example that you are exhibiting to all the students and citizens of Hillsborough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Cole, Robin Road, Hillsborough. Not only do I echo Mrs. Cansegor's sentiments, but it has been an ongoing discussion in faculty rooms for as long as I have had friends in this district and as long as I have been a public school teacher in Somerset County. And it is appalling to me that we're having this conversation now in 2012. I'm going to say something here that is not directed at anybody. It is just giving you a bit of history about how far we've come and yet how little we've learned. Many years ago, when Charlene Weixel, that good woman who just donated to this district, was principal of Triangle School, Mrs. Weixel was faced with that first conversation about what holidays are going to be acknowledged and what holidays would not. And I kid you not when I tell you that Mrs. Weixel had a list of potential holidays that could truly go from that stage probably to about here, holidays we hadn't even heard of, but that we were going to discuss with all due respect, because that's what she was asked to do, and that is what she did. And as we got around to Rosh Hashanah and Christmas and Good Friday, it was appalling to me, the prejudice of this town. Because as I sat there and listened to the pros and cons of why we needed to respect Rosh Hashanah, someone else said right at that table, "I don't want the school closed for some Jew holiday." Yeah, I make this up. I do not make this up, ladies and gentlemen. And that was a woman who I thought was a friend, and I haven't said a word to her since that day, and it must be, I'm going to guess, around 1993. The point is, I would hope we have come far enough that we can be sensitive, but more, not only sensitive folks, but respectful. I know what the curriculum states in this town. My kids went here K through 12. I know the good things that are Hillsborough, and I know the things that are still appallingly wrong. Mrs. Cansegor brings a point tonight to your attention. To open these schools on the first day of Rosh Hashanah would be akin to asking the kids in this town to come to school on Christmas, to come to school on Good Friday, and quite frankly, it's pretty sad that both teachers and students have to juggle their calendars for the first day of Passover in many times with preparation. But the world just doesn't stop for one religion. The world shouldn't have to stop, but the world should be respectful. We are a town of diversity. We are a town of very good people. We are a town, unfortunately, of some who are ignorant. That comment I made just a few minutes ago reflects just the kind of spectrum of thought we have. And Mrs. Weixel, for the first time in her life, as long as, first time in her professional life that I knew her, and I knew her well, was not only appalled, but she asked that we take a break because this was as hurtful as it could be, and I have never forgotten that, and I am asking you, not just pedagogically, is it meaningless to open on the first, the first day of school? Nothing is going to be accomplished. Anyone in this room who's either been an administrator or a teacher will tell you, the first day of school is organized bedlam between schedules and getting kids on the bus and off the bus and this and that and the other thing. Nothing is going to happen that day that can't happen on Monday. But quite frankly, I am here not just to support my colleague and friend, Mrs. Cansegor, but also to stand her as a Jew and say, "It's wrong." It's as wrong to ask the Jewish kids and the Jewish faculty of this town to come to school on, for the first day on September 6, as it would be wrong to ask any person of the Christian faith to come to school on Good Friday, and I know there are times that has probably happened, and it's wrong. There are some things that are wrong. And as our community grows in its diversity, not only should we try and make right what has been wrong in the past, we should go forward with a sensitivity that I know we're all capable of. And it is on that day, when I see that truly move forward, that I can honestly be proud of being in this town. We do a lot of things right here, Board of Education. You do a lot of things right. But when you cut down the humanity and the diversity by a calendar, it never should have been on the table, it never should have been discussed, it never should have been an option. Open the schools the following Monday. Thank you for listening. Good night.
Thank you.
My name is Shangard Nandra. I live in Devonportway, Hillsborough. I think from what the two ladies have just said, it sounds like that there isn't a single Jewish holiday that's being, when the schools are closed. You know, pardon my ignorance on that. However, I think the board has to come up with a policy as to how you would, or what criteria you would use to close the schools for religious purposes. Because I remember going to a memorial service recently, and I was told that in New Jersey alone, there are 120 religious groups. I don't know how many there are in Hillsborough, but I think there are quite a few. And I bet you, every religious group thinks that their particular holiday is the most important holiday in their whole religious movement. So you are going to have a situation where you probably have hundreds of people come up here and say they want a certain day the school to be closed. You, as a Board of, Education Board, has to come up with a criteria as to what will determine as to when, which particular day, which religious day the school should be closed. And I don't know if you're thinking about it, I don't know if you're talking about it, because you probably have empty number of Muslim days, you'll have empty number of Hindus, the Buddhists, the Jains, you name it, they're all here. So you have to, now, I've been thinking about this, you could have a criteria like if there are 25% population of schools belong to a particular religious denomination, maybe there, there is justification to close the school. Or 20%, I don't know, I'm just picking up numbers. However, if there are four or five kids in a school, and then to close the school for their religious beliefs, I think would be grossly unfair to the rest of the student population. So I guess somebody's taking a note. I hope you will give us your feedback on what you discuss and what you think and how you're going to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Lisa Venice, and I live on Updike Avenue in Hillsborough. I'm here tonight as a concerned parent of two children currently enrolled in the Hillsborough School District. My focus is on the recent adoption of the core curriculum content standards and resulting changes in the curriculum content and grading alignment. As with any new program, there is significant amount, there is a significant amount of change and adjustment that takes place. As a human resources professional, I have experienced implementing many change management initiatives in the corporate environment. As I'm sure you're aware, in order for these changes to be successful, they need to be rolled out with adequate thought and preparation, incorporating several key elements. These elements include communication, training, resource and support planning, and measuring success. To that end, I'd like to share a few suggestions around these four fundamental areas. With regard to communication, enhanced communication and transparency with parents is essential. I only became aware that the curriculum changed when I attended back-to-school night in September and noticed the new grade weighting and emphasis on in-class assessments. Getting parents informed and on-board early on to partner with our teachers needs to be a priority and sets the stage for success. With reference to training, providing appropriate and sufficient training to our teachers is essential. They are on the front lines delivering the new content and need a comprehensive professional development program so they can be effective. With reference to resource and support planning, budgets need to incorporate resources to help students adjust to the new requirements and shifting academic priorities. More priority and focus is now being put on critical thinking and problem-solving skills. The game is now changed, and there are new rules. Children like mine, who have been in this school district since kindergarten, are now being asked to learn differently and are being evaluated not only on their understanding of core content, but also on their critical thinking and problem-solving ability. These areas have not traditionally been in the spotlight, and now they are. We need to make sure sufficient resources are there to help them close any gaps and ensure their success. With reference to measuring success of this program and new curriculum, I understand that the New Jersey ASK testing and student assessments and grades will be measuring the success of these new standards, but I urge you to also take into account the effect this is having on our students' self-esteem. So much focus is on performing well on the standardized testing, both on a weekly basis in the classroom and yearly during the standardized testing. In middle school literacy, for example, some classes use a weighted grading system and some use total points. In the weighted example, 40% of the writing final grade is weighted on impromptu and timed writing pieces, and in reading, 30% is weighted on a timed OEQ, open-ended question, and 40% on tests and projects, both assessment-based. The grading is so disproportionately weighted in the favor of testing, which they cannot study or prepare for, that I feel it unfairly puts too much emphasis on assessing their problem-solving and critical thinking skills unless on what they've actually learned. Trying their best, putting time and effort into their work, is not being rewarded. It is actually causing self-esteem and motivation issues because, try as they may, if they don't score well on the assessments, their overall average will suffer. You could have an honorable student carrying a B average in literacy, not perform well on an assessment test, and because of the weighting, their overall average drops to a C. If one poor performance on an assessment test can do that to your grade, imagine how much test anxiety and stress you would encounter with subsequent testing. Grades are the method a child uses to measure their academic success as well. The Hillsborough Township Board of Education, Board of Education's policy on the grading system states that, and I quote from the policy, "As a rule, grading should reward pupils for positive efforts and minimize failure, and pupils should be encouraged to evaluate their own achievements." I don't feel that either of the current grading systems as they exist, the content area total points or current weighting percentages do this. It doesn't reward students for positive efforts, and so much of what they are graded on is weighted towards the in-classroom assessment, none of which they can study for or put a concerted effort into, like they can with homework projects and their in-class participation. In closing, both my husband and I proudly went through the Hillsborough School District and graduated from Hillsborough High School. We made this choice to raise our children here and enroll them in the same schools we attended years ago. The difference I see between now and then is that students are under a far greater amount of pressure than we ever were, and I believe a majority of this has to do with the focus moving towards performance in standardized testing and the grading being so unevenly applied to it. I do agree that assessments are needed to evaluate and ensure alignment with the New Jersey core curriculum standards and the common core state standards, but believe a disproportionate amount of weight is being put on them at the expense of our children. If the weighting and focus cannot be more evenly distributed, then I urge you to put a support mechanism in place so our children can receive assistance, positive reinforcement, targeted teacher direction, and insured motivation to achieve not only academic but personal success as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'd like to address with regard to the calendar. I can't comment to how the calendar was put in the past. I know that in sitting on the Education Committee, there's been a lot of sensitivity in putting this calendar together, not only for this year, the upcoming three years. There are a lot of constraints that the board has with regard to the calendar. There is a contractual start date of September that we must deal with. We must balance that also with the need to train, to have in-service days for the teachers. There are extensions into the summertime, which has constraints as well because the schools are not, do not have air conditioning, so we can't go too far out into the end of June. And with regard specifically to that year, we could, we did, we chose not to, Friday was a hard decision, we talked about from pedagogical perspective, starting on a Friday. We chose not, Thursday is off, the Wednesday before is an in-service day. And so with that specifically, we kept with the, with the historical approach that we have with regard specifically to having the first day of Rosh Hashanah off and then having school and service on the second day. There are other holidays that we do not have school. With regard to the gentleman who asked, "What's the approach that we take?", there are a number of different factors that go into when we decide to observe a holiday and not have class in session. And those primarily, and this was discussed in previous board meetings, particularly when the calendar was raised, is if there is a large impact to education, to the student body, so whether a large percentage of the, of the student population will not be in attendance, or a large portion of the staff will not be in attendance. Those, when it, when it hits a certain threshold, we feel it's more important just to take the day off, observe it, and then, and then move on. So the, the, the calendar that we have for 2013-14, I believe also has only one snow day, which is another aspect. Every year, we have, we try to schedule three. It becomes more and more of a challenge as we have to try to balance all the different constraints that we have. So this was the best, our best output that came from, that was recommended by the Education Committee, was voted on by the board, but it does not mean that we cannot change it between now and when the year happens, even during the year. And as you can see, as we've had discussions with this year's calendar and, and the constraints that we have, also with the, with the stresses that Mother Nature has placed on. So I, like I said, I can't talk to how the calendars were done in the past, the level of sensitivity that was done in the past. I do know that from sitting in... I do know that from sitting in the Education Committees, that there was sensitivity that was placed with regard to religious holidays of multiple denominations, and this is the best that we've come up with. So, thank you.
Are we doing old business or new, what are we doing?
I'm going to move it on to old business for the Board. Mr. Joliet?
Yeah, I just wanted to also comment on the calendar. I just wanted to say, from my perspective, I don't believe there's any cultural or religious group in Hillsborough that values education more than any other. I certainly think it's insensitive for us to suggest that, and I certainly wouldn't base any calendar we came up with based on that kind of a false notion. So I just wanted to put that out there, based, you know, following up from the comments we heard from the public tonight.
Mr. Joliet? Any other comments from the Board on old business? Mrs. Haas?
I think we need to reconsider it. I think that if the possibility of having voting in our elementary schools removed next year, we have an option, which I'm sure other groups of people are going to scream about, but I'll throw it out there. We have the option of having school days in November, additional school days, the Week of Teachers Convention, and if we could establish those days as school days, and continue to solve the multiple problems of getting 180 days into the school year, and respect everybody's holidays appropriately, and have sensible breaks during the rest of the school year, I think that's something that should be reconsidered. And I think we have time to do that, and I think we have to acknowledge the fact, I mean, we don't, we don't acknowledge officially our correspondence here, it's on our, it's on our agenda, but it's not particularly acknowledged publicly. But we've had a lot of letters, and we've had a lot of phone calls, at least I have, about this issue. And a lot of people are very, very upset about it. And it, you know, in the past, we have had discussions of why we only give one day off for Rosh Hashanah when it's a two-day holiday. And we've had that discussion a million times, and I've spent a lot of time educating people about why it's a two-day holiday, and why it's an important holiday. And I think that the calendar is a nightmare. It has always been a nightmare, it always will be a nightmare, and people have problems with, you know, getting it done, people have problems with kids being in school too late in the school year. I mean, those are real problems. Kids do not learn when it's 800, 900 degrees in their classroom. And all of those things have to be taken into consideration, but I really do think that we can do better. And I'd like to bring this up again to be discussed in committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Mr. Pulsifer?
I actually was going to say the same thing, but, and usually you go last, Judy, so I thought I'd say it first, and you could second it for me. I really, you know, to the point that Judy raised about the elections, and I really think we need to consider that. And to people who would go back in history and point out that I have long argued that we have that week off, my argument that we have that week off has always been based on the fact that I felt, from a educational perspective, we were not giving a quality education, having kids in school on Monday, out on Tuesday, in on Wednesday, out on Thursday, Friday. If we can have three straight days of education, I believe that is well worthwhile. I would strongly advocate that we only be closed Thursday and Friday of that week. This is all predicated on being able to work out a solution from the election perspective. But that was always my concern in the past, that in the same way that I questioned the value of Friday, and as the first day of school, that Monday and Wednesday, in the midst of a long break for the kids, seemed not valuable to me. But if we can make that change, I think we really need to consider those three days as being back in session.
Mrs. Haley?
I have to agree with Mrs. Haas and Mr. Pulsifer on this. I have never been a fan of us closing for the entire week of November, and we've had staff members come to us at Board meetings and speak out, you know, against closing as well. They don't think that it's necessarily the greatest idea. I think that starting school on the Friday is also not the best, on top of the fact that it's, you know, we are dealing with major sensitivity issues here. But I think that if we have the opportunity to revisit, especially in light of the fact that we've been working on trying to come up with a solution about moving elections, I think we absolutely should.
Thank you, Mrs. Haley.
I'll try not to be too provocative, but also, as we're exploring all options, I think we should also explore contractual options as well. So I'd like to direct that, to put that into, for Negotiations Committee as they, as they come up on their negotiations, is that, to explore it at a minimum.
I know you probably want to have the last word, Mr. Kings, but, and with all due respect to the three over there, three wise people over there, those three days in November were teacher and service days, so maybe those days for classroom days, doesn't solve the calendar problem, we still have to put the three in-service days somewhere, fit them within that thing, so it doesn't completely solve it. Those weren't just a complete, does not, those weren't completely off days like Martin Luther King Day is what we're thinking about this year. So there's still some, it's not a snap-your-fingers, we've solved it solution, but I think it provides certainly possibilities. Because I think the in-service days are certainly more flexible about where they can go.
For a long time, we did not have those as...
Many more options.
And for quite a long time, we did not have in-service days on those days. So it's, you know, they were moved there as a convenience when we finally decided that having, having school Monday and Wednesday didn't make a lot of sense, it was moved there, it was convenient to then put it there. But in prior years, they were always earlier than that anyway. So, you know, I, again, I think, with all due respect to our teaching staff, we can work more flexibly around in-service days than working around the religious holiday, trying to be sensitive to religious holidays, I would put more weight on that and try to work out something on the in-service days.
Thanks. As I mentioned before, this is, every year it gets challenging, it gets more, continues to be challenging, but this, the, although we have approved the calendar, we have the opportunity to change it, and so it's going to go back to the Education Committee to look at that once again. Thank you. Any other old business from the Board? Mrs. Bogacheski?
On a totally different subject. I, I unfortunately missed the last Board meeting, so I just wanted to just say how proud and thankful I am to what a wonderful community that we have, how we all gathered together during the hurricane, and even though our town was quite devastated, our schools and everything like that, how as a community that we have come together to support the devastation down at the Jersey Shore. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers and parents and children that have really come together to do that.
Here, here.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogacheski. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you.